Yes, yes, yes. Evening Nottingham, welcome to the Selectmen's Workshop on Budget. Today's date is December 12th. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick statement. I'm sure everybody on the board knows, but those at home, Nottingham has finally received the second ambulance, and they're currently setting it up for use. So we now have a second ambulance.
Should be available, it's going to get certified once you get it ready. It should be available for actual field use in about two weeks.
Two weeks, that's great, that's good news. Alright, so there was some side discussion here before the meeting. Was there something that we needed to go over?
I don't know why, again.
Okay.
This one from 12-4 does not read like this one does. There's different notes, there's different numbers moved around. What are we looking at?
12-4 is where we ended at the last meeting.
That's a cut we made as a...
So why is line five proposed budget higher than line five was on 12-4?
Because weren't we moving...
Because, so the Police Department merit compensation was built into their budget.
So you found out how much she was building in and put it back into this one?
Correct.
So now we can just cut it for what we want off this one? We're going to have that discussion, I mean, have it just...
Yes, so...
Without saying we're cutting from police.
There was discussion at the Budget Committee level that they said it should be either, the merit compensation should be distributed across the departments as a whole or all in the merit compensation pool.
So 12-4 is where we ended off. 12-12 here is the edits all put together. So tonight we are going to be working off 12-12.
Correct, there are some...
This is just a guide to show us where we were at?
Yes.
But tonight when we talk and we're all going around the board and we start going down numbers?
Yes.
We're on 12-12?
Correct.
And I was just saying the end number? End operating budget, the 4% cap number? And the difference is what's reflected on this sheet, but it's been properly...
Correct.
Okay.
And that's after the cuts that we've already made?
Yes.
We still have to cut over 400,000? Wow.
Well, because yeah...
So we're at...
$74,000.
Yeah, yeah.
So I gave you the supplemental sheet which figures out what our 4% cap figure is. And that's based off of how John Scruton was calculating the 4% cap last year. So as of right now, if we take this, the $414,000 difference, we're at 8.37%. We need to be at 4%. Or as close to 4%. Or the Budget Committee has to propose a budget that's...
So, right now, at 414,000, if that present number, that is an 8.37% increase.
Correct.
So we need to cut 4% off this, or we need to cut 8% off this?
4%.
He said, "We have to cut 414,617,000."
That doesn't make sense for what I just asked, percent difference. Is that percent difference...
The target number we have to be is at that 4.9...
9.51, so it's 414,617,000.
Currently, we're at 5.4, or 5.36. If left as is, the 5.366 from last year would be 8%. But the key number is the 414,000.
Gotcha. Because originally, the budget difference was 5.15. We already cut 100 grand from 10.6, that's why we're at 8.3. Want to make sure we're all...
And this is also based off of the estimated revenues, which you're first seeing tonight as well.
I guess who didn't make this point, I was hoping.
Is there anything you want to mention on these?
On the revised revenues?
Yeah.
So every year, it's based on projections. I think I had stated at the last Selectmen's meeting when we were discussing the budget, 2.5 million is about where they are from year to year. They don't fluctuate a whole lot because it's the revenues that you're receiving from your departments. It's the Highway Block Grant, it's the Room and Meals Tax. I mean, those do increase based, because they're population-based. Your timber tax, your building permit revenue.
The two items that we'll be discussing at next meeting that we got the public notice on? Highway Block Grant, sorry, I don't...
Those are not factored in here because they are considered one-time disbursements. So this is the recurring revenue that the town can expect to receive on an annual basis.
What we decide, whatever on those, is not going to interfere with what we're discussing tonight. Thank you.
So if you look at where the actual revenues are as of the 11/15 figures that were plugged in, they're in the first column. Those are what are used to plug in the figures for what we estimate we'll receive in 2024, so...
Is there anything to the colors? Or is it just how are they kind of...
Well, so the gray, all these add up to this total in the DRA column.
Okay, gotcha.
Anything in red at the top, the red at the top, which is the property taxes collected, we don't factor those into our revenues because that is what you're raising based on your appropriations for each year. And then the current use, if there's a land use change tax penalty that's paid, that actually, all of that goes to the Conservation Commission, so we don't use that as an offsetting revenue. That's the way that the town had established the revenue.
Wouldn't make that much of a difference anyway.
No. So last year's estimated revenues were 250, I'm sorry, 2.5, And this year, based on the calculations, $2,470,970. So it's about a 35,816 is the difference between last year's estimates and this year's estimates. The one thing that I did notice is there was money added into last year's estimated revenues for the highway truck, but they were actually revenues from 2022. They shouldn't have, so I guess the way that I look at it is last year's revenues may have been overestimated.
Where do we start?
The line items that are highlighted in blue are the ones that we had tabled for possible consideration of areas to reduce.
The green ones are the ones you recommend?
The green ones are the ones that I went through and I made some adjustments just because I saw that they were either not calculating right, or they weren't calculated right to begin with.
And reflected in the...
And those are all reflected in that bottom line to bring us to the 8.37. Obviously, the large change was in the employer FICA. It was originally calculating out at 70,000 and change. And if you do it based on the payroll with potential merit increases, it's actually 89,000. So there was 20,000 that we ended up having to add in after all the cuts, and we discovered that at the December 4th meeting. One of the topics that came up at the Budget Committee meeting is, as they were going through reviewing, I believe it was Tom that stated that he was not in favor of making any further reduction to the the road reconstruction and paving as far as moving additional monies out to warrant article. But as it stands right now, we're at 200,000 in this operating budget, potentially 400,000 for discussion for a warrant article. But, I mean, if you're looking for an area that could reduce the bottom line, or at least cut it in half, that's one area. The other thing that had been done several years ago is the Social Services were always a warrant article, a separate warrant article, and those got moved into the operating budget. It's not much, it's 20, I think it's $27,000 as a whole. $24,375. Wanted to move that out.
Where does the default budget put us at? Like the difference?
Last year's.
Huh?
Last year's budget plus the $40,000 that we raised for the Property Maintenance Manager. So it'd be the 4,850,000, so it would be just shy of 4.9 million.
So that would basically redo all the cuts of the merit increase. It would do everything for us, because it would just cut everything right down to zero essentially, but that's the only one I did. What are... Okay, so you, the reason the Police Department salary full time...
Has changed just because we pulled the merit increases into the merit compensation pool.
So blue is a topic of discussion from what previous. Green is just areas you've made changes?
Correct.
To reflect current? Did Tom have any recommendations besides firing Nottingham personnel? He doesn't want to take the road budget out, but, I mean, we can only cut so many $200 line items down to $100. We're never going to get there, so we need to make big cuts. Unfortunately, the police cruiser, the roads, that puts you at $260,000 right there out of 414,000. I just don't see how we can do anything else besides eliminating personnel.
John, can you talk to the planning board about the...
No, we didn't have a meeting. This is the first time, and I can't tell you how many years that we actually went a month total without, or longer, without actually having a meeting. Our first meeting is tomorrow night. I did send an email to everybody on the board. And basically, the email was just telling them what we talked about at the meeting, which is all public knowledge, they could have watched it on TV. But in case they weren't watching it, I mentioned to them about the fact of cutting the planner half, about getting out the SRP. So tomorrow, if we have to go there, it is. But again, that's 20-some thousand dollars right there. I mean, that's, we're looking for $20,000 numbers.
Yeah.
That's what we're, I mean...
So we're not...
You take four big hits, or you take six big hits, and you save the little. I mean, it depends on your philosophy and how you want to look at getting this accomplished.
So I just want to clarify. We're not looking at cutting 414,000 to get to the 4% cap. We actually, to get to that, we need... To get to 4%, we technically need to pull about 200,000 out.
Oh, I thought we just...
We just, does it make any sense, we just talked...
According to the tax cap worksheet that I calculated...
You just said that, yeah, we just looked at that.
The percentage difference is eight, so technically, if you reduce your overage by 200,000, it'll bring us down to four... Yes.
We're over by 4.37.
I just said that. When we started here, I asked that question directly, and I was told that we were cutting the 4.15. And I said, "Are you sure it's not the other way?" So...
So what's the number?
You want the number to get to exactly 4.33?
Yeah.
You need to cut 200 and... I couldn't even do this, let me think.
I mean, technically, in simple math... If our original proposed budget for 2024 was $5,540 as written the first time around, which made a budget difference of 14%, you have to take 10% off, which was the $500,000. We already cut, I guess, is where I don't, 200,000 doesn't sound right, but maybe it is.
We were down, we were at like 3.11 after our last meeting, I think.
That we cut 311,000?
That, no, that's what the, we're still over it.
Still over.
So it's the 49.51, 4.93 increased by 4%, which would be 5,149,552.72. Am I correct?
Yes.
So the number we need to hit is 5,149,553. Can we round up? I got 26 cents in my pocket. I'll give it to the town.
I mean, taxes usually round, and they don't count cents.
I'm going to write that off as a donation, so. Ask for the form later.
So what are we really off right now?
216,577.
Do we have an actual list of proposed roads and proposed...
We do not.
So, I mean, we're still so far behind on that, just saying we're going to whip out money and try to, going to get our roads based until November, but...
Again, we have...
But if we move it to a warrant article, we have to...
You got to sit on a warrant article, like we've done in the past, and said, "For the paving of streets X, Y, Z, etc. to be used through", how you mentioned, year 2024. When originally, last year, I was upset myself about taking the road stuff out. But at the same point, we have worked so hard to just maintain, and I don't think we've done anything crazy to just improve the quality of life for the people that work for the town, just giving them beyond lowest paid in the area to up. So we stop hemorrhaging people, which means more training, more everything like that. So we've got to protect the people. If it, I think when you put stuff like the roads on a warrant article, it doesn't look that bad, because it's like, eh, 200,000, that comes out to so many dollars per thousand.
About 200,000?
It's going to be 600,000.
If you break it up, you have to break it up. I don't think you throw 6, you do 2, 300,000 dollar ones, or something like that. Because I think there is a difference. I think if people can kind of be like, "Well, I selected this one, these roads are bad. That one, you're top coating a road, I don't think that's that bad", and they select not to.
So if you reduce the shim and seal coat by 100, so we only leave 100 in, take 100, put it on a warrant article?
I don't know.
Along with the...
If you throw 600,000 for road maintenance, some people are going to be like, eh. If you break it up like this chunk, do you guys approve this?
So like three different warrant articles specifying which streets we're going to do it, and then depending on...
They can decide what they want to do.
A popularity of what they think needs to be done is how it gets done.
There is stuff like the first 30 feet of Stevens Hill Road. Everybody knows that that is just a mud dog, and every car gets destroyed that goes on it. I believe that route.
I wouldn't say everyone.
I never drive it. I mean, are we going to pick it, are we going to pick it on towards...
But if people aren't on that page, I don't know.
Yeah.
I just think it's hard to pick apart which road you want.
Well, because you can say the same for Mitchell.
So we do have, we do have a pavement management plan in place. It's just we're several years behind. Obviously, with COVID, a lot of that got pushed back. I mean, we haven't been doing any of the crack sale and sale code.
So we're still spending the same amount we've been spending for the past four years?
Well, we don't, you know, we're talking about that right there, right? So let's be, let's be a little different here. Because we did do a nice job, I believe, in my opinion, of catching up people with pay, our employees in town and everything like this. $81,000 for merit? We could take 40,000 right off that. Now we're only looking for 160 left. We've still got the things. I mean, I can probably go through and find another 100,000, some things that were not going to be popular, or get there, and we could leave that line on the way it is. I mean, there's, there, again...
Definitely in many ways.
Do we affect one, I mean, that's what we have to figure out, I mean, tonight's the night. So open for discussion on how anybody wants to think about it. But it's one way or the other, we're going to have to make it... Because, I mean, again, again, not to be the unpopular person here, but whatever.
We're all saying the same thing now.
Yeah, I mean, that, there you go, you could take the 45,000 there. We could cut that planner in half. There's, you know, 14,000 right there. You could take the $7,000 almost from the SRP. I mean, that puts you at 21,000, that's $65,000.
You moved the Social Services to a warrant. There's another 24...
25,000, right, or whatever, 24,000. I mean, that's almost 100, right?
So with the Social Services piece, so that got, I didn't realize that got moved to the, when did that get moved to the budget chart?
I wasn't on it when that...
I don't know, Betsy just let me know that today.
Definitely has been more than five years.
It's been several years since it's been rolled into the operating budget.
Yeah.
John, we were on the Budget Committee together, and that was, those were line items.
Yeah. Yeah, because I've been sitting here, this is my fifth year here, and it's been here, and I'm sure...
So my question is, is would it, since they put on the budget, according to Shelley, it hasn't been spent, we haven't spent those items?
The Social Services, we have.
Oh, okay.
It's the General Assistance, I think, that you're talking about.
Okay, I think it was General Assistance, okay.
General Assistance is different than the Social Services.
They get paid.
And they usually wait till the end of the year for...
Correct.
...submit a invoice.
Yeah, I mean, Social Services directly, I mean, again, you could say each, or they all affect some sort of part of this population in town.
So just as you're starting to go through and really discuss if there's, if there's a line item that you are looking to reduce, like you had just thrown a whole bunch out there, if you could just refer to them as the line number for the recording secretary?
Oh. Again, and that was just, that was...
I know.
When we actually get to a hard number on this individual line, I, yeah, we'll get to that, correct?
In my opinion, I would have to agree with Matt and some other board members in moving the line 282 to a warrant article. And I think if the board does a good enough explanation to the general public, I think the public will understand, and will vote for a 600,000 warrant article.
I mean, we don't even know if we need 6. We haven't even picked, I mean, we say we have the Highway Management Plan, but we haven't actually, like, bid anything. We haven't done anything. So we don't even know what roads we would be doing. So like, the number might, a feasible number to only work in 24...
We always have X amount of dollars put forward every year.
According to the Capital Improvement Plan, we have $600,000 potentially earmarked for...
Every year.
Up through 2028.
Thank you. So...
What he can get done.
So based on what? Moving 282 to a warrant article, that brings it down to what? 60,000?
16,000, I believe.
16?
1.6.
1.6.
Okay.
Which, that is maybe even an easier number to take off your merit compensation pool, taking 16 grand off of there. It's not as...
I would take off, I'm sorry, but I take that off the planning board. The plan board.
Sure.
That's what's spent.
Right.
So you're saying...
Which, um...
It's on the planning board, the planner?
Yeah, okay.
Please not get in half.
Yeah, right.
So, okay.
Line 102, you were referring to.
Do we know, I'm sorry, I didn't, I should have brought my computer, but last year's warrant article, going back to before we got 200 grand. Last year's warrant article, we cut 200, it was 400,000, and we cut 200 and put it towards a warrant article, and we kept 200 in the budget. And we did the roads over there, we spent 385, basically almost the $400,000 on the road. We spent it all. But the question is now, do we have that, do we know those roads? Or are we putting a warrant article in front of people without a plan of what roads we're doing?
Well, that's...
That's what we just said, yeah, we just said...
Do we know the roads, we have it all?
We get the roads in order to put them into the warrant article, but there's a plan. We're years behind, but there are roads.
Okay.
But it would take some work, definitely between now and January 9th is the warrant articles due by?
Yes, I believe so.
That's when the petition warrant articles are due.
Okay.
Well, we did get a good feel from last year and the people of where, many that were sitting in our audience about, and then even this year, the lack of previous years of, we're not talking just roads, about everything in Nottingham, about our lack of maintenance level and how we, you know...
Kind of kicks it back to them too, though, like it puts the onus on them.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, I'm not about decreasing the quality of roads. Like, I agree that the roads, but we're bound by the 4%, and I'm just trying to protect, when I say the people, the people that work for the town and put their time in. And then this other part is putting it to the people of the town, saying, like, "If you want to spend your money, if you want the town to get better, here's your chance. This is what it is." And just seeing the amount of people we chased this year, this one year, just to staff up, and we're still...
Well, the other equation that we haven't factored in is now we've accepted all these roads that we weren't maintaining prior to. So that $600,000, that's a whole lot of discussion.
Because technically, that's incorrect, your statement.
Yeah.
We always maintained them, and they've always been doing it. They just became officially town roads now.
Okay.
But the town has always graded, added fill, repacked a culvert on all those emergency lanes for decades.
Okay.
So we weren't technically, it wasn't something that they were just now... It's always been in the budget, it's just been sneakily dimmed in there for years. Now they're actually real roads, so it's addressed differently.
Right.
So as far as the maintenance, but if, if, let's say there's a culvert that fails, is that some, were we addressing that as well, where we were repairing those?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We fixed it fast, I can name quite a few that we've, on those, over the past 40 years, which they miraculously got new, dug up, cover put in, resurfaced, and they weren't engineered, but they were done.
So would it be safe to say, John, just putting this thought out there? Everybody likes to blame COVID as the reason why we fell behind, which is part of it. But I think since accepting these camp roads, it has further set the Highway Department behind.
Are we doing more on those roads than we did?
Well, I mean, since the previous director, you know, he was making slight improvements, widening the roads where he can and so on. That's additional cost to them, man-hours and equipment usage and all that other stuff. You know, he was just doing this on his own.
The previous...
Whereas the warrant article, based on the folks that I have spoken to, said they wanted just the status quo.
Again, the money that we just spent all last year on this money, 90% was done on all the paved roads in town. It wasn't...
And it didn't even, it didn't even cover all the roads.
It really wasn't covered that much.
But it was being done lethally. You're not...
Well, I guess it was back in the old days, it was, sure. Still got done, but...
Yeah.
Trouble is, you pave roads, you got to maintain them, you got to keep them up. Otherwise, you're going way backwards.
I wouldn't use, I wouldn't use these new roads as a source of...
We have these...
No, I don't.
Being a problem by some reason.
I don't think that's going to be a problem, I mean...
Well, Sacks Road, we've got three culverts that down there that need to be fixed, don't we, Alan?
I don't know the exact number, but there are several.
Yeah. Added cost.
Okay, so I do have one question.
What do you, which line item?
Just looking at the very final line of 32. It says, 4% cap number is 49.51, 4.93.
Is that accurate?
Because we're, we're.
That puts us back to what this spreadsheet.
That's, these were numbers that just carried forward from that, so ignore those, ignore that.
So that's not the right number?
I, I don't know. So, oh, so there was just, cuz it wasn't calculated?
Correct. Ignore that four percent tax number. So, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's what I did.
No, I don't, I don't think you did. I think that was there cuz it's on all of our printed sheets. So let's just say hypothetically, if you were to remove line two eighty-two in its entirety, the two hundred thousand that we had in the operating budget for the road maintenance and potentially cut the planner, line one oh-two to fourteen thousand, that would be a reduction of two hundred and fourteen thousand, which would bring your percentage difference to four point zero five percent.
And four point three is the target with the revenue?
Four percent.
Four percent, okay.
Well, so last year they had something funny, right? It said it was like a four point three, but based on additional.
Additional revenue that was offsetting.
Okay. We don't expect anything like that for this one?
No.
Okay.
No, because I've even, I've even factored in money coming in from rec revolving to offset the assistant director, the rec department, to cover her wages and benefits that were added into the operating budget that were just previously all in rec revolving. So it's still the same. It's just.
Okay.
The challenge is this is gonna happen every year.
So it's gonna get worse.
We're gonna have every town meeting is gonna be twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-eight, thirty-two warrant articles to fund the budget, just saying.
So it's gonna come down to. With that, yeah, with that four percent tax cap, there's, there's no way to either treat the employees correctly or.
At, at some point, services will be affected.
Yeah.
And that would include salaries at some point. Not saying this year or next year or even the year after, but at some point, we're going to be looking at that.
And I don't, like, looking at the numbers, I don't think that we are.
But so, are, what, where are we at? We, are we at?
We have not voted on that line.
The question is, do we have just a separate warrant article, two hundred thousand dollars for additional for ship seal coat, or do we do one warrant article for six hundred thousand?
I think we should, my opinion. Based on what you were just saying, the number of warrant articles we're gonna have, I would like to see that combined. And I think if we do enough to educate the, the general public as to why it's six hundred thousand, I think the general public will go along with it.
I would hope so.
It's just that number.
Doesn't nothing gets done?
So you would.
When that, when that number hits and it shows the tax impact per thousand for six hundred thousand, it's just gonna show pretty high and the people, after they got their last just basic tax increase based off the services and everything we've had and making it halfway through the year, there was already plenty of sticker shock that when they go, if they see a huge number, this, oh, another three dollars per thousand or whatever, I don't know what it's gonna be there.
Yeah.
The line item becomes known.
Yeah.
And so then maybe you can piecemeal it out and maybe we can get something and be like, all right, they only wanted to spend two hundred thousand this year. What can we fix?
Is the risk different if you put it all in one and it doesn't pass?
I, 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 I totally get it. I totally get it. But then we also, you know, during the deliberative session, somebody could walk up there, put it right back into the budget.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, so.
We are.
Problem solved, exactly. So at that point, do we make an adjustment to the, uh?
Well, you'd have to.
Right.
But that, you cover those warrant articles after this one. This is the second warrant.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, you're saying if they.
If they add back into the budget at the deliberative, then you obviously wanna bring the warrant article zero.
Correct.
Unless we wanna get more roads up there.
Would you still say that there's some from carryover?
Well, as much as we don't.
No.
Right?
Right.
Cause we're thinking it was a hundred twenty, but it's.
Yeah, I think there's probably closer to sixty thousand.
Okay, which is barely enough to probably like cover any like emergency road stuff that happens or something like that.
Probably can't even put a.
All right.
That should put some sidewalk on the bridge.
So compromise. Separate warrant article for the two hundred thousand. If it should get put back in it during deliberative session, we just ax it.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, I think responsibly, that's what we, some people would do at the meeting, right, is.
Okay.
You would change like warrant article three, I changed the, the number to zero. Will you appropriate zero dollars for this? And then it just gets killed. It'll, it'll show up onto the thing and everybody be like, they'll all be confused, yes or no, yes or no, just kill it.
Good compromise, Steve, John?
How I think it's gonna play out, just because I think if you do it two separate warrant articles, best case scenario is that the seal coat for the two hundred gets, somebody puts it back in without too much discussion at deliberation and the four hundred stays and goes and it'll be passed. Two warrant articles to the voters, one will fail.
I don't disagree.
So you think one for six hundred potentially could?
I, no, one for six hundred is gonna fail. I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even.
That's what I'm saying.
You could start with that, but then someone puts this back in the budget, then you go back to that warrant article and reduce it to what it was last year, the four hundred.
About six to one, half dozen the other.
I know, but at least.
I don't think we can like plan to hope that somebody is gonna show up and stand up and put the. Any of us can ask taxpayers as well.
No.
That is correct.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
But it. Yes, somebody would probably be more willing or more likely to put the two hundred thousand roads back in the operating budget than they would be to go back in and slowly increase the numbers that we're gonna go through and ax and cut that are gonna affect people's lives. That, that number would probably stay.
The simpler we make it for the people, the better off we are.
I agree.
And you know, if we go to the town and we say we're at a four percent budget, we're supposed to be, this is our proposed budget, here it is, and these are proposed warrant articles, and if somebody wants to move a warrant article to, what, I don't know if we can. Can we move a warrant article back into the budget?
Well, yeah, you're just saying, you know, the line item there, increase.
You just zero it out. Like we would, we would actually make that line item one dollar. We wouldn't make it zero so that it.
We have to make it a dollar, right? In order to have a line item in there, you can't zero it totally.
Somebody could go back. I, we've seen that go back and forth at other deliberatives.
Only, really only once because we haven't had that many deliberatives where this has been happening, so. Again, it's still new to everybody and you don't know what the turnout's gonna be at deliberate either.
Correct.
I mean, cuz.
It was more town deliberative last year than it was school.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
I don't know why, but that's a different story, but.
I just don't.
I don't know. I, I think if I'm a worst case scenario guy, I think a worst case scenario, nothing changes at deliberative. You've got two warrant articles, one for four, one for two. Nobody wants to hear me speak. Sorry.
I just wanna make sure they can.
That I said what I said. I, I would just, I would think worst case scenario, you've got two warrant articles for all of the highway maintenance then, or the road maintenance, then if one passes the other dozen, at least you've got money in the budget. If you put one six hundred thousand in there and nobody gets up and changes this and that fails, then we're screwed.
Correct.
Worst case scenario.
I mean, we, we're gonna hit it either way because the people, when we put the money into repair stuff and it raises their taxes, then they get their tax bill and they're like, what are we spending the money on? It's like, you, you wanted to fix a town.
Maybe we should send pictures of the roads that are done and stuff and improvements with the tax bill.
With the tax bill.
The six hundred thousand warrant article is actually for all of the town roads. And I think what everybody's concerned about is what we went through with Ledge Farm Road with that big ticket item when it came up the second time. It was like, I don't know, six, seven, eight hundred thousand, and that was voted down, but that was for one road.
Right.
You know, the six hundred thousand.
It was, I think it was more, I think it was more than that number too.
Goes towards all the roads or, or the ones that heavily need it. And we all know there's more than one in town that need it.
But that's where I think we list out the roads.
It's gonna be an easier sell to the general public that this isn't just for one road. This is for the entire town and, and you know, and we bring up what roads are, are set to, I think that's where you're going with that, that are set to be worked on this coming year or finished like Deerfield Road.
So the way, the way that this is listed as contracted road maintenance projects or technically shim, seal coat department, you, you may be able to have the smaller warrant article just be shim and seal coat, like fixing any type of things. And then the other one is straight, like repaving four hundred thousand to, to fix roads. This is gonna fix X, Y, Z.
We already have shim and coat in here.
No, that's, it's the same line.
Two hundred thousand dollars, that's the line item is shim and seal coat.
It's called shim and seal coat department, which is contracted highway services.
Or road maintenance projects, sorry.
Oh, I was looking at the blue. I didn't even look at two eighty-three. Okay, I get it now. All right.
So the, that warrant article could be generally a little bit more vague if it is to top coat and fix anything and then the other ones can be more specific to.
So two eighty-three is the total of two eighty-two? There isn't, there isn't two hundred thousand dollars for shim and seal coat?
No, I agree. I understand. It's just.
Okay.
One's called the contracted road maintenance projects and then it's called the shim, seal coat department.
Right.
And it's the same thing.
It is the same.
It is the same thing. I'm just saying shim and seal coat is not.
Accurate.
Repaving a road.
No, it's.
It's part of the contracted road maintenance projects.
Correct.
Maintenance.
Right.
What do you think, Steve? Be quiet over there.
I'm having a little hard time seeing today. I just had my eyes worked down.
Oh, so the little spreadsheet's not working out?
It's working very good for me, but I, I do think as much as I, I hate for towns always hit the highway department budgets based with the price cap that we get presently, I, I don't know how we can proceed without hitting it. I think people realize how bad our roads are and I think they'll support, support it. I'm not a lover of this four percent cap, but, uh.
They voted, they voted to keep it, so there's nothing we can do.
Right, we gotta live by it.
Well, you can amend the percentage.
You can.
You can afford a warrant article to amend the percentage.
That is correct.
But that wouldn't impact this, next year's budget. That'd be the two thousand.
Correct.
Correct. I believe originally when they were attempting it, they thought it was for the school. They didn't realize the school and town were different and it got enacted onto the town and that's where we're at, but.
School, for the record, is at a four point one percent increase this year or for next year.
But I think we gotta do our homework and list what we wanna get done and.
Right.
What roads.
Yep, just like they have it. And they've always done it in the past warrant articles. The roads are always listed.
Unfortunately, we got a new road agent or highway director.
We still have the road plan. Road agent can change, road plan hasn't.
Yes, yes, we do.
Yeah.
Okay. I talked to Mr. Farnold and he said he had one, but he knows that Paul is gonna turn away on it.
Well.
I have a copy of it in the office.
Oh, good.
It's just, in, in reviewing it, we're several years behind. So what we just did on Deerfield was actually, I think that was technically earmarked for two thousand twenty-one. So when I say we're, and, and it was done in a larger entirety of what was done last year.
Honestly, we're gonna have to redo that just cuz we're so far behind and some roads get more sun, some roads get more heaving that.
Well.
We need to.
High traveled, yeah, Deerfield.
Finding somebody that can help us, I don't know if that's another budget item that we would have to put down or how that was done in the past, if there's a grant for it or something, but it's definitely something that's where it's so far behind and so dated. And we have so many new developments that are like in and in some state of whatever, it, it's gonna need to be redone just so we can see how we're tying everything in and then we can get a good reprioritization because working off a eight-year-old document that we're six years behind on is.
Right.
I mean, it's the only thing we got to go on, so I'm saying keep proceeding, but it's definitely something that would be good to have.
We're working on a real short timeframe here.
Right now? Yes.
Which is awful.
So.
It shouldn't be hard. Drive around. You can find the. I mean, take the list, walk it down. All right, this one looks pretty bad. I agree. It's the next one on the list. Go to the next road. Yep. Highway director has done road budgeting, so he should be able to have a ballpark, what, how many we can stack onto there.
Right, whether we can get away with a shim or not.
Right, I mean, if you look at like.
Repaved or can we just shim it?
If you look at Frank Chuska Way, there are eighty percent of the road in that area is fine, but then there's some areas like low gullies in the shade where like the pavement is coming up and the, the bottom first coat is showing. So you should be able to fix only a hundred feet of it. Something like that would be the best way to really spread the money and keep that from really peeling up when the plow trucks hit it and it starts heaving again, but. So we need to decide, are we all in on line two eighty-two? Two eighty-two? Reducing it to a dollar? And getting a, a solid list of.
Yep, cuz that won't be the shim and seal coat. And I don't know if you, it, I guess you would probably wanna list out the roads that would be planned for that. I don't know if you normally do that, though.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
For shim and seal coat, you probably, I mean, it's in the, in the operating budget, but I don't know if that has a similar plan as far as which roads are gonna be, no.
I don't think so. I think it's just as they, they noted.
Right.
I think we would just list that warrant article to just say.
If you're looking to, um.
Could say like contracted road maintenance.
And I would define that pretty clearly as far as what's gonna be done with the money, you know?
Yeah, so that it doesn't seem open in it.
Well, it sounds like we have two. Steve, John?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
There you go.
Okay, so we're gonna reduce line item two eighty-two to a dollar.
Yep.
And potentially.
All right, and then, uh, what was that other one?
Uh, line item one oh-two was for the planning board for their, their planner, their contracted planner from Stratford Regional. Twenty-eight thousand dollar line item, so.
Reducing it the appropriate amount to put the budget at four percent.
So that would be sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
I don't, I don't think that, I mean, again, if.
Fourteen thousand, it, it, like I said, if you reduce it by fourteen thousand, it brings you to four point zero five.
I'm gonna go recap something else right now. Take the sixteen thousand dollars off the merit and leave that, we leave that planner with the planning board.
But you haven't spent?
We've only spent eighteen of twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, you've already, you've, I'm just spent this year by almost ten, let's say, when you add, well, you canceled the meeting, so.
Well, all right, what if we cut ten and we take, what's the, after that, what are they?
Sixty-five seventy-seven out of the merit pool.
Because he doesn't need to be at every meeting.
You said it yourself.
No, but, I mean.
I don't know what he does, again, I never, you know.
It, it's numbers. It's numbers. I don't know what he does
out of the meetings for us and what he charges us for. And what maybe he didn't do last year, which he maybe was gonna need to be doing for sure.
You're saying the amount of work depends on the amount and size of.
Sure.
Development, developments and like the one, the one on one fifty-six, that's gonna hit next year.
And again, if you guys haven't looked at Zorni Orange, haven't looked at what we call, all the stuff we have on to what you need to do to make a development in this town, we are, it is not. You know, some people wanna say they're gonna, again, this is a real quick, this is two-second story. The growth in this town, for the people that wanna put a development here, let me tell you, they don't walk in here and just say, here's my plan, sign away and go. There is so much detail, so many things from slopes, this. I mean, a planning board can go a year for somebody to try to put twenty houses up in town or, or longer. So and, and the planner sits there and goes over everything, every detail that engineers bring in towards us. I don't even know how to look at half the crap, sorry, half the stuff that's coming in front of us because it's so detailed.
So I get another, a question then. So line number two sixty-four, highway equipment parts. Budget for two thousand twenty-three is forty-five, only spent twenty-one. I mean, we bought a lot of new equipment?
Uh, it's not. Okay, so this is through November fifteenth. I know that we did have to just buy cutting edges and so there, there is some additional invoicing coming through before the year closes out.
But to his point, if you took fifteen grand off and you made it thirty and you're only signing a one thousand dollar check, you're not jumping over.
Right.
We're just setting line items. If, when we're running into next year and we need more highway stuff and we determine that people don't need their full merit increases, we can take the money and move it, like we can move the line items and move the money around.
As long as it's in the operating budget, yeah, we can move it.
Correct. And parts is a super tough one because some years you break a lot of stuff and some years you have newer equipment that doesn't break or you have people that if they're driving the equipment correctly, it doesn't break as hard.
Or we have new people that are unfamiliar with areas of town that are challenges.
There's definitely a lot of hidden stuff. I mean, Guile Road, the dirt portion of Guile has a lot of little hidden rocks and things like that that damage a wing on a plow truck pretty quick. I don't even know about the lake roads and what they do over there, but that's obviously very narrow, tight roads that. is so that, I, but you can definitely shave some off of there. And I think we can, same thing goes with the planner though, like we're two weeks left in the, three weeks left in the year. Cutting a few thousand off of that is not going to.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm just saying.
How much?
Few thousand. If, if he, if we take ten off the thing and then maybe we take five off of that other thing and then take two to three thousand off the merit pool increase.
What about uh, something else that uh, the newsletter, eight thousand dollars?
Which newsletter was that? I don't remember.
Um, it's line item twenty-three. So that's the quarterly newsletter publication. There's about twenty-four hundred dollars that we're receiving in advertising revenue that offsets some of that cost, but obviously.
She said she's increasing that this year, next year.
Do you think there's still enough older generation in town that read it?
I do.
I, I would think that there is some other stuff of monies that are just budgeted here that isn't being used, equipment. Maybe the planner is a little bit over budgeted that we could shrink the numbers in a little bit tighter. We're, we're down to like sixteen thousand-ish.
Sixteen six fifty-nine.
So I think we're.
So when you calculate your total number, our total, what we're gonna propose to the town and audience is a five million, five billion forty-four thousand eight, three hundred eighty. Right?
It's gonna be, no, five million one hundred forty-nine thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars. That's the four, with the four percent.
That's at exactly four percent.
Increase from last year's budget.
Correct. Increase from last year's amount raised by taxation. That is how it's worded.
Set to be blown apart at the town meeting.
Delivery.
The delivery, excuse me, you're correct. All this work for somebody to come in and be like, I want to change that line item to.
You know what'll happen.
Yeah. But our job here is to make the number fit.
In the interest of keeping this going, where, where are we at? We gonna cut anything out of the uh?
As of right now, you've agreed to remove two eighty-two to a dollar.
I'm gonna tell you right now, this is gonna be a request at the budget committee meeting on Thursday to make that a penny now.
To make the what?
A penny.
We work off whole rounded.
I'm just saying, it was a twenty-minute conversation at the.
School.
School about that. So there's gonna be pushback over ninety-nine cents.
We round to the nearest dollar.
Okay, I have a, have a solid reason.
But in that case, would round it down to zero?
It would if you put it at a penny. The software's gonna round it to zero and then it would be on the, you can't have a one penny item because we don't do it by the cents. But anyway, I'm just letting you know, be prepared.
Twenty minutes, all right, let's not talk about it for twenty minutes here then.
Right.
Right, so two eighty-two, we've got that, so now we're down to.
A dollar.
A dollar for that one. So remaining balance we have to cut is sixteen?
Thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
All right, line one oh-two, where are we at with that? Where do we feel comfortable cutting from that? Ten?
We're, I'm sorry, hold on.
One oh-two is the planner.
Okay. I, I think you could take eight thousand off that, make twenty thousand. Is that? You can get some more information tomorrow. Susan, hard and fast, we're just coming up with.
We need to make the decision tonight because you're proposing your final budget to the budget committee.
Thursday.
For Thursday.
Okay.
Either that or you get it as close as you can and they can trim what they want. It's, it's their budget that they cannot propose at four percent.
You feel that the full amount needs to be there for line one oh-two? Or do you feel that there is some that could come down? Five, three to five thousand? Cause it's only at eighteen right now and it's budgeted for twenty-eight.
And again, I haven't seen everything on that of what that expenditure is and I wonder why it was at twenty-eight? Oh, I missed that page, sorry.
It was a level fund from the prior year.
Right.
Do you know anything about the narrative for that line? Cause there's a narrative that said that we are on pace to easily exhaust the current budget. But I don't know.
That was the narrative from two thousand twenty-two. Or for the two thousand twenty-three budget.
Okay.
And I think that was based on potential subdivisions and site plan reviews that they were gonna need assistance with. Um, as well as the discussion to move forward with possible amendments to the master plan, which they've kind of changed that process by doing it section by section. So I, I guess it really depends on what the caseload is and how much support they're going to need from SRPC.
So I'd make a suggestion right here. If we, it was, it's, if we take some off there. We put that master plan lineup, we change, if you go to line one twelve, will we cut it to a dollar? This is something we, the master plan is something we need to do. By putting it at a dollar, we just threw it down the road for another year. Which we didn't. We left it at a thousand, right?
Yeah.
Again.
Forget it's a thousand.
We're gonna piecemeal this, what I thought we left it at. Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I'm with you, John.
You're saying the thousand dollars isn't enough?
No.
Not if, and again, I mean, the planning board keeps discussing it. And again, if they're listening, Ed and the rest of you guys, see you tomorrow, but this needs to be moved and get, get, get done.
So can we take one to two thousand off your planner and put that over there?
I would, just because that way, I mean, if the money's there, I mean, we need to get forward going on that, 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 get it done.
Well, you can do that, you can do that as a line item transfer if the operating budget passes.
Right.
Yeah, but I, I, when we go to the budget committee, I'd rather have the lineup of where it is instead of start moving stuff. Just straightforward, say this is what it is. This needs to get done. This has to get done. They were, they were successful when we cut the uh, uh, the, the fees to uh, SRPC there, Stratford County. And they put it right back in.
Yes.
I feel that they're probably gonna do the same thing on the master plan.
I don't think so at all, cause I don't think anybody's gonna propose it.
Yeah, okay.
Who does that work? The majority of that work?
We contracted out last time we did it because we were starting from no plan.
And that was in two thousand twelve?
And we spent all that money back in two twelve in order to get this whole document so that we could use it to help forecast our future and all this.
And you're supposed to update it every ten years?
Yeah, and now we just threw all that money away and we're, and they, again, that's how I, you know, looking at this where.
Well, hopefully there were things that were done over the ten years.
Again, it's a, you need, it's like anything else, you need to keep it going. It's like, hey, we fixed the building, but we're done. We're not gonna, we're not gonna do anything more.
So I'm assuming in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, it wasn't because of coming out of the pandemic and stuff. Is that why it wasn't?
Right, yeah, yeah, it just wasn't, other things got, it's always something that seems to take precedence over something else. I mean, they need to set up a committee, they need to have the, you know, what they need to send over legally, I mean, it's. You know, I think the thousand gets the project going. I don't think the thousand gets the project finished.
Line one oh-two.
But again, whatever you guys want to take. It is what it is, where we're at.
Now we're reducing it, eight thousand based on what Matt said? Or are we moving some over to what John said?
Well, we need sixteen grand, right?
John, I mean, is that something we could put on a warrant article for the master plan? Because it sounded like it's gonna be fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to contract somebody to do that work.
Yeah, um, yeah, I don't know, probably gonna be five grand maybe total.
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
No, because we can use half the stuff, the historical side of the master plans, all that stuff's gonna be repetitive. You gotta just redo all the data for the amount of houses in town.
They gotta pay somebody to do all that?
The roads, yeah, you gotta do all the re-data for the students.
Gonna pay somebody only five grand to do all that?
There's a lot of calculations, a lot of work. People get.
No, I'm saying only five grand.
It could be more, again, I don't know, but I'm saying that a thousand ain't gonna get anything done.
No, no.
So what if we made a warrant based on what you're saying, but make it non-lapsing? Can you do that? Make it non-lapsing?
Well, now you have to put.
So it's not binding that we have to put it, spent it within that year? So that way, if we don't get somebody right away and it takes halfway, half a year to get somebody out here to, to, to help us.
Well, if you contract with somebody, then.
You dropped, you get a bill.
I'd be in favor of putting it on whoever made the idea for the warrant article.
I just get back to the simple for too many warrant articles.
One oh-two. What are we doing?
If you. How many sub, how many division, uh, developments did we have this year?
Well, we are, right now, we're working on.
Next year.
Twenty-five, or, well, these are still.
Smoke Street?
Still using a service, just because it came from, we ain't finished it. Nothing's been signed, but you got twenty-five houses on Smoke Street. You have a potential, real good potential of twenty more on one fifty-six behind, right next to Dolph Dam Road, or excuse me, twenty over there. You have a lot that's pending on Deerfield Road, not too far down the road from Steve's, which in their advertisement was questioning, it could be thirty lot subdivision or whatever, that could be potential there. I mean, there's. That'll be a couple of years down the road. So, but what, to get it finished, but it, once it starts. From any conceptual, it starts the thing. And then you, we have the regional planner too, that's probably gonna be looking at everything that's gonna be going, uh, being done over on uh, our new commercial property for where USA Springs was.
Yes.
You know, we don't know, the planning board's never seen a development of this size, so we don't even know what the heck, I mean, this is all new to us.
Yeah, so the last conversation I had with the building inspector, he says we have currently about fifty-six to sixty permits for houses this year. And he expects, now that also includes all the building that's already been done with those condos on Route Four. Next year, he expects the same, but all houses and none of the, none of the condos.
Well, yeah, cause I just, there's forty-five.
So I'm just throwing the number out there so everybody can, you know.
Yeah. And there's possibly, there's easily out there a chance for another fifteen lot or ten lot subdivision coming in. Cause all you need with the new zonings, if you got a thirty-acre parcel and you could fit the road and put half the land and things, you can get fifteen acres. Right? Oh, yeah, we still didn't even do, it's not there yet, but one was just approved, was off Moore's Road and uh, and that's another, that houses, I mean, it's all done now, but I mean.
Has that made its way through the plan?
Yeah, it's already been signed. All documents have been done. That was over the question of the cisterns.
Gotcha.
Well, we just had that question.
I said we drop it to twenty-two and kind of work through the budget from here.
Okay.
It's my opinion.
So six thousand?
Drop it down by six.
Yeah, absolutely. If we keep the six there, keep the SRP, sure. You know, again, I'm, I'm thinking of, I know it's terrible to say it, but again. I think the line item with every raise that we gave last year and how aggressive we were at our pay for hiring, that, that our merit item should go down. That should make up the rest.
The line item one oh-two proposed at twenty-two thousand.
Correct.
What if they're basically, they're basically not getting a raise?
So that brings us to ten thousand six hundred fifty-nine dollars.
Which if you, I mean, that, that maintenance pool one, if you just took ten off of that or. Now I'm lost again. Highway equipment parts, two six four?
Two sixty-four.
What do we got there? Four thousand and some change?
Right now, ten.
How do we get ten?
We only took six off the.
Sixteen, right, okay, all right, gotcha, all right.
Again, if you took the, I'm gonna say it again, it's a unpopular thing, but if you take the ten out of the merit, you still leave seventy thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. We're still gonna be giving in raises next year, spread across a, a community that just all got raises. And we're, right now, we're presently staffed, so I mean, again, I can understand this.
I don't think.
Hopefully we stay that way. If we don't, then we won't need all that because there won't be the people to give the raises to. Negative, I know, sorry. Yeah, we, we did. We gave them all decent raises. We gave everybody decent raises this year.
That's this year. Come next year, you want to retain them.
Bring them, you know. Yes, decent rates from where they were, but it.
Yeah.
Again, it only barely cut them to keep them from leaving for other departments. And even then, when we did, people still left because it just wasn't enough. People are seeing what we're offering and just outbidding us by two dollars an hour for almost everything. Police, fire, highway, it's just.
You know, honestly, the fires, uh, salaries could probably come up more, you know, we're still behind the eight ball with them.
Yep.
Now, it's not gonna happen during this budget.
On line two sixty-four, we just move it down five thousand dollars and then maybe the rest comes out of the compensation pool and then that's like a compromise. So we bring that line two sixty-four down to forty thousand and then whatever the remainder is of the five thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars out of line five. That leaves at a roughly seventy-five.
So hold on, so line two sixty-four, highway equipment parts?
Yes.
Just drop that down five thousand. To forty thousand, we, we barely used half that budget. Granted, we have no idea where that could go.
Well, I'll tell you right now, the one that's gonna come up with the budget committee is probably the rec department. They've always picked on the rec department, I think.
Maybe. But at the same time, the rec department's one of the biggest revenue generators in town. Besides taxes. So.
All right, so we have five thousand.
So what does that leave us with?
Fifty-six, fifty, uh, fifty-six fifty-nine.
And so take that out of line five, the merit compensation pool? And then we've kind of heard everybody? Does that, put that line two?
Seventy-six thousand sixty-eight dollars.
I think there's still a.
Five.
That's a lot.
Still seventy-six thousand sixty-eight dollars for the merit compensation pool. And then we just gotta really focus on getting solid warrant articles for the roads and everything else we discussed.
So if we reduce it to seventy-six, it brings us to four percent.
Correct.
Yeah, right now with that change, it's exactly at fifty-one forty-nine. Five fifty-three.
Now for the master plan, do we want to take that, do we want to put any more money towards that at all?
It, it needs to be done. I mean, we're gonna, it's gonna impact impact fees, it's gonna impact a lot of things if we don't have a master plan in place that's up to date.
So do we need to now do the smaller cuts we've been talking about, get that line item up to five? Like we could take another thousand dollars off the merit compensation pool, get that down to seventy-five, put that over there. See what else we can cut, five hundred dollars here or whatever for non-used line items to get this master plan up to rough four, five thousand? I don't, I don't know. You're saying that we could just use, like, go ahead and do the master plan and then we'll do a line item transfer?
As long as right now, where, if we're at where we need to be for our budget, we're at the five mil, whatever number that is, that's gonna give us the four percent where we're at. What we decide now, whether we want to move money from somebody's line item to somebody else, perfect. Cause then, you know, again, the money's there.
Okay.
We're not taking it away from anything, but we're just moving it to where we think it's going to be spent so that when we show the public that why and where it's going, that we're more accurate.
And compensation pool should be for what it is. People show merit. So some people may come in and they may not get it and we may have extra funds here that can be line item moved over. I agree, the master plan has to happen. So however we get that done, it should be a priority we start off.
And I know we're keeping a tight budget, but we also, I mean, this is forward thinking for down the road. Is that our, our fund balance? You know? There is something that we have to keep, as, as the cost of everything keeps going up, that needs to keep going up also eventually.
Cause right now, it's right now.
Right, because the cap's gonna keep going up because the town's getting bigger, the money keeps getting bigger. So even though right now we're, we're good, but in three now, years, we won't be good and where do we find the extra money to, to bring this back up?
We're gonna have to make a recommendation to try to move the cap up to some sort of other number. I don't know what that is. I mean, I don't want to see a ten percent year after year. That's just unmanageable too.
The town's never been that way.
Well, I mean, historically.
Directed towards different.
Historically, there was, when the tax cap came up in the discussion, I, I think Chris's spreadsheets pretty much determine how much the fluctuation is from year to year and it's, it's always been between like three point four and a little bit over four, so.
So why are we so off?
We're really not, I mean, again, expenses rose tremendously this year.
Yeah, payroll items.
Payroll items.
If that's.
Insurance.
And health, insurance, healthcare is definitely.
Sure, and I mean. We're staffed to capacity now, which it's, we haven't been for numerous years.
Yes, you've also brought on six full-time.
Yeah.
Employees that weren't there.
To hopefully do this road maintenance, to get these culverts replaced, to do everything we need to do.
And again, those. We talk about those culverts, but. Do you have an update on that?
The culverts now.
No.
You know, there is.
So the, um, one line, uh, line one fifty-one, new fire station heat. So the two thousand twenty-three budget was eighty-five fifty. So the two thousand twenty-three budget was eighty-five fifty, actual is eleven six and budget is twelve for this year.
That's their heating cost, oil cost, propane cost. We're, we were hoping that number's gonna be lower, once we have the, the better budgeting and the new, the new furnace that they did put in.
Two. Two boiler systems were put in.
At the fire station?
At the fire station.
Mm-hmm.
So you should see a savings on what that is, yet we don't know, but.
We'll hopefully see a savings too, because we did not get our fuel oil or, and our propane out to bed last year, so we're just paying, but again, not knowing.
Right, it's contracted this year.
So I, I remember her saying that she was hoping that that is gonna be. We'll, we'll be able to maybe clean that up next year, but we don't, we don't know what the new boiler, how efficient it's gonna be, and who knows what the winter's gonna be.
It's only been a partial year.
Okay, so are we all? All in agreement with this? Painful as it is.
Say it, John.
We're at the four, I mean, for what we're gonna need to possibly do, we, and, and for the way this. Inflation, the way things are going, what the prices are increasing everywhere, employee costs. I mean, would I like to see our budget lower? Sure, but. I think the best way to do it is reduce warrant articles, cause that's really probably what affected more last year on the.
And so who normally writes the warrant articles? Does the?
We do.
We get together and just do it at the meeting? Okay.
So there's a lot of them that carry forward from year to year, obviously we take into account the, um, the CIP. And we had a lot of discussion tonight about what was technically earmarked for two thousand twenty-three. Uh, there was only, I think, two items that were identified that didn't get taken care of and, you know, do we move them forward for two thousand twenty-four, potential future years?
We shouldn't have any trucks or anything like that on this year's warrant article.
No fire equipment, no trucks.
Twenty twenty-five, I think there's one, isn't there?
Two thousand twenty-five, yes.
Yeah, what, what is it?
There was, there was a truck, it was just a pickup.
It was a, two thousand twenty-four is a pickup for eighty-three thousand and the CIP committee.
Relax that one, we just bought one.
Yes.
You got a truck that can't use that?
Do you wanna go into discussion on warrant articles?
It's up to you.
Might as well.
Well, no offense, it's only eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Take one pass.
Forget we have these, uh.
Non-public?
Yeah.
No, they're not non-public.
No?
Nope, you can, you can technically vote on those, those are, uh, the veterans' tax credits that we talked about for the all veterans.
Why don't we get that out of the way now then, so that we can, uh.
Uh, we got a letter out, um, right around the same time the tax bills were issued. Just informing the affected property owners that they would see the additional seven hundred and fifty dollars in their tax bill, but. It was the consensus of the board that an abatement would be coming through, um, we have received letters of. Letters from property owners that are affected by it, and, um, some of them stating hardship, so I, I believe that you have enough. To justify good cause for the abatement.
And so we, we need a vote on that one, right?
Correct.
Someone like to make a vote?
I make a motion that we approve the abatements for the tax, the veterans' tax credits.
All veterans' tax credits.
All veterans' tax credits.
I'll second.
A motion made by Tim DeBrio, seconded by Matt Sherrill, roll call.
Hi, Steve Welch.
Hi, John Moore.
I'm Ben Bartlett.
I'm Tim DeBrio.
I'm Matt Sherrill.
Okay, unanimous.
So we just gotta.
Sign them all.
Oh boy. So while you're doing that.
So we're writing our warrant articles partially on the CIP, right?
Correct.
So this has a whole bunch of stuff, right? So this shows police cruiser, but then it says operating budget, so we don't care about any of that.
You, you don't, yeah, you don't need to worry about the ones that are, so the police cruiser is in the operating budget, we didn't make any changes to remove that, so we're good there. Um, the technology capital reserve fund that was established by the police department, the goal is to carry forward with that, so another warrant article for ten thousand. That will cover the, um, obviously she received the grant, but. We have the town portion, so that will be coming out of it as well as any other technology needs that come up.
That wasn't in the operating budget?
She put it in there just in case, for whatever reason, the capital reserve, the addition of funds into the capital reserve fails. Because she still has to make that payment, so this isn't. The ten thousand dollars isn't solely for that, the body cams, it's for if they have to replace a laser or any other. Technology needs. And it is a capital reserve fund, so it will only be withdrawn as needed.
So we're looking at for the twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
Column?
Yes.
So I stopped looking at the wrong thing.
And I will just note that there were two items that were in two thousand twenty-three, the first one is the gym floor and wall safety up, upgrades. Uh, for twenty-five thousand, that did not make its way onto a warrant article in two thousand twenty-three. So the question is, is whether we move forward with replacing the gym floor, since we've had the underdrain repair. Um, and then the other one was the audio video meeting room update, that's fifty thousand, that comes from the cable franchise fees. And that was pushed back because of the uncertainty of whether we were gonna be converting the space to recreation and. And doing some renovations into the other room to make that the new meeting space. It didn't make sense to purchase the audio, audio video equipment and then have to move it. Or have it not work in the potentially new space.
CIP have any of the swapping of the rooms or no?
No, cause we haven't, we, we have to figure out what we're gonna do.
Gotcha.
We wanna do. So the CIP committee decided to not incorporate any of that facility stuff into the plan for two thousand twenty-four. Or going forward until we figure out as a board and with the person we hire to figure out what our priority list is.
Yeah, we, uh, we'll discuss that tonight too.
Sure.
Okay. Just while we're here, I mean, we've got time.
So where do we start with warrant articles? Oh, I'm sorry, we're in CIP.
Well, the CIP is a warrant article.
Yeah, so we're gonna have more in addition to that. At least to have a discussion.
So are you in favor of moving forward with a warrant article for ten thousand for the police department's technology capital reserve fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Need a vote on that?
Nope, um, because what we'll do is we'll draft them and then you can go through and do your formal recommendations, once we get them all compiled into a list. Um, the fire department flooring replacement miscellaneous repairs for twelve thousand dollars.
Where in the fire department?
I think that was right in the.
It right in the, the main entry.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
And then going down.
I'm in favor of that, anybody else?
Yes.
Yep.
Uh, fifteen thousand dollars for base radio replacements for the fire and rescue.
Yeah, they need their radios.
Not working now, or?
Think they're outdated.
Outdated.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what we had, we were told.
So instead of throwing these all the warrant, we still have ARPA funds that need to be spent by next year, right?
Yes.
Something like the flooring, I mean, if we, one, two, three, four, five, six, I mean. To John's point, if we throw seventeen warrant articles, like what, what can we handle with the money that has to be earmarked through twenty-four?
So why don't we look at everything we wanna do, and then we, after we look at that, we can go back and say, okay, how much money we have in ARPA? And then we'll go through the warrant article, see which one we can put it towards.
Where do we have like a hundred some thousand left in ARPA? It's not much.
No, but if you do like a twelve thou, like twelve thousand for flooring replacement, first of all, that seems extremely expensive for just the foyer, cause it's a very small foyer, but.
So which one?
I thought it was out in the bays.
Flooring replacement miscellaneous repairs. I'm hearing.
No, I think it's ti, it's tile.
Okay.
Inside the, from what I was, read.
I did not read anything, so I don't know.
So the whole, that was the.
Speak?
I thought that was the whole, the whole inside of the fire department.
Right, something from.
Where all the trucks parked, the whole thing.
Well, that's all concrete where the trucks parked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, it's still gonna be sealed, finished and done. That's where, cause remember the roof was leaking. There was a twenty-two in there and that was getting all over the floors and.
Yeah, I mean.
Cause I've walked in there, I don't think, I don't think the floors in the. The conference room, or we wanna call it areas.
Well, all the tiles are coming up, right? Yeah, well, same over at the PD.
Noticed, but.
Same with the police department, everything's coming up over there as well, so.
Yeah, but that, we know that's old.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to.
I think I'll probably have to pull the, um, the original CIP request for that and figure out. I, I actually might.
I have it right in front of me. I'm agreeing, I wanna make it safe, I'm like, whatever, but at the same time, if we gotta go through this. Use the ARPA funds, like some of this stuff makes sense, let's fix the building at twelve thousand dollars.
Oh, absolutely, I'd rather see, without putting a price to the, the taxpayers, if we have the money from the government, the ARPA's to spend it on stuff that needs to be repaired.
Has to be spent next year.
We have to spend, right, but I'd rather see it spent to do what they want us to do is make sure our, we're maintaining our buildings and maintaining our.
Right, and I'd rather not wait till March, like, let's get them replaced now.
So to your original point, there is, um, a hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars in ARPA funds remaining.
How much?
One fifteen, nine fifty-one. Alright, so according to the CIP project submission. Raise and appropriate funds to replace flooring and office areas of fire station, repair roof leak in an area of solar panels, clean gutters and downspouts. Repair corrosion by mandors and reseal patch, parking lot, driveway paving. And that was originally requested at twenty thousand.
But didn't we resolve some of this already? The roof leak, is that resolved?
Uh, no, I don't think it has, did we, no, because we thought the, uh, the, uh, solar panel company was responsible, it was too far. Since they've gone up there, they're not gonna cover it, so it's on us. Sure.
Thank you.
So, and I don't think we've had anybody up there to look at it, have we? Since you've been here anyway. No, okay. Well, what about using some of the ARPA funds for putting a gate up there for the police department? Blocking off that area, so.
The gate where? Here?
Yeah.
Gates, the only problem with gates is when they don't work, especially during a snowstorm or something like that, and then, then they're just stuck.
Pull up and you can pull it out yourself. I'm not, looking for one of those bar ones that you can swing in and out. You know, the rec was looking for a gate for the, um, uh.
Beach.
The beach, you know, electronic gate. So, I mean, we can use some of the ARPA funds for that.
The floors in the main, showing where.
I think before we.
No, I'm.
Say it, say it, say it.
Money on the town beach road, I think we need to make sure that, so we can use the damn thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there's several line items here, there's.
I'm just throwing ideas out.
There's the safety system for the doors, fifteen K, the bay floors, floor. Debate, the vehicle area paint coat is wearing sixty thousand for roof leaks at solar panels.
This is all stuff that was noted in the facilities committee report?
Yeah, and then there was a replacement of slightly worn in the office area for fifteen K.
I thought we already took care of those doors.
Cause that was it, that was in here for this year.
You know what's gonna be nice? If we get that guy, if the, the facilities manager's gonna go around, we'll actually know right on top of what all these things are done. Yeah, you're right.
I.
Cause if we don't, or at least we know who we call and to ask and say, hey, you paying attention to this?
So there was eleven thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-three for the bay door upgrades and repairs.
Was that completed? Do we know?
I believe we said that it had been, correct?
I thought when we had asked a couple months ago that it had been, but we have to look into that.
Okay. Oh, it's a question for Matt. Fire chief.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so. Twelve thousand for flooring replacement and miscellaneous repairs, once we get a better determination of what those include.
Yep, yep.
Um, base radio replacement, fifteen thousand. Okay, um, eighty-three thousand for the pickup truck, we took that out at CIP, I assume you're gonna do the same. Twelve thousand for the baler for the recycling center, this would be.
We determined we didn't need a new baler, right?
Well, we're hauling the cans, we, so originally the baler was proposed to. Take place of the can crusher, which fell into disrepair and was no longer.
Correct, but if you crush the cans, it saves space, less frequent trips to.
Cardings.
Yeah, except for the baler was gonna cause a problem because we didn't have anything large enough to haul it, except for the highway department trucks. And then we're gonna have to use tobacco to haul these large blocks of cans in, so.
Well, you mean, what they use for everything else but their job?
So. The.
Yeah, alright, so then.
I, I think it almost created an additional problem because it would just make a component that was so large and heavy. That we then had to repurpose the highway department to come over with bigger trucks, if I remember correctly.
So then we talked about using it for the other plastics, cause right now.
I think that was his ultimate goal, was to separate the plastics, but if we don't get a benefit from separating them, is it worth separating?
Well, based upon.
Did we get an answer?
We did, and based upon that report, it is worth separating them, I mean, we'd make the money back in two years on the cost of a baler.
Okay, so you're suggesting use ARPA funds for that?
I'm not suggesting anything yet.
No, we're just talking about whether we're moving forward and then we can have the discussion as to what we could pull out for ARPA.
Okay, uh, yeah, alright.
So do we wanna consider a baler for a twenty twenty-four warrant article potentially or other funding?
I can go with that.
Yeah, I would say yes.
General consensus?
John?
Leaving it to the voters, so.
Potentially, if we go through and say, yes, you wanna approach a baler, and then we start looking at this ARPA number, like, we don't wanna just spend it all in one day, but if we can go through and. Make our operations more efficient now, four months ahead of time.
Sure.
Okay, um, six hundred thousand is the. Goal for asphalt road maintenance reconstruction. Uh, that was split out between warrant and operating budget in the past, obviously we're now looking at six hundred thousand as a warrant article.
And then.
What's, uh, why is Berry Hill Road as its own giant?
That's culvert.
It's not, it's culvert replacement, Kelsey Cooper, Cooper Hill and Berry Road, so that's what's under the design. Stays right now, that, so there was a warrant article that was raised for ninety thousand, it was two culverts at thirty-five thousand apiece and twenty thousand for the library parking lot.
Two, two million dollars to replace those culverts?
Yes, that's what's.
Wow.
Potentially expected.
These aren't your average culverts.
But no, what we were also talking about is that they did that culvert, the culvert.
That culvert maintenance.
Maintenance, that was done after this.
They mapped out and identified what they are.
And which, and the priority for replacement and stuff, so I don't know.
People the other side of the bridge are we servicing in Nottingham?
What bridge?
Which bridge?
The twin culverts on Berry.
On Berry Road?
Not many. I thought the town line was literally at the end of the swamp.
I was just looking at the line item, it's not a twenty-four thing anyway, so I don't have to beat that one up, I can get smart on it later.
As soon as it goes to the hill, it turns right to pavement, so it's.
As soon as you make that right, that's still Nottingham, until you get to the end where it turns pavement, then that's Lee or Epping.
Could we close the road?
It's, it's not a twenty-four thing, we can.
Yeah.
We can hash it out later, I don't wanna delay. Works, capital reserve, one.
Food for thought.
This, we got too many conversations going here, so.
So the culvert replacement is not earmarked for any funding for two thousand twenty-four, so we're just gonna move past that.
Alright.
Okay.
Um, hundred thousand into the highway department equipment capital reserve fund.
And then the full six hundred thousand dollars will go to the warrant article for the road.
Yes.
How much is in there right now for the highway?
I don't know, I have to get the balances, the CIP committee requested them as well.
Right.
Um, I can tell you what it was as of town report printing, which we didn't withdraw.
I know, it can't be that big, cause we have a brand, we had a brand new truck.
Several of them, well, if you think of the last couple of years, how many we bought?
No, but the big, big new six wheeler stainless steel one that they put, not this year's Christmas parade, it was in last year's Christmas parade, we just got it.
That took a good half mil or whatever, that was a lot of money, that was. That's a big truck. The wing, the plow, everything.
So the highway truck capital reserve fund as of.
Oh, thanks, can I come over and got it? No, I got it, thank you.
As of twelve thirty-one twenty-one was. Three oh eight seven seventy-nine, and we added a hundred thousand in again this year, so it should be four hundred and eight thousand.
I'd say we cut, cut that. We cut it.
That number is not correct.
So let me get you, let me get you the correct balances.
There's no way we have four hundred thousand dollars on a highway fund.
No, cause we have. This was as of the town.
That ten wheeler was bought with two years ago money, not.
But no, it, it didn't come in till this year, so we did not pay for it until it came in.
Bingo, right, but those funds were already.
These, these are as of the end of two thousand twenty-one, I have to get, I'll get you the updated balances. Let's not.
We've had that one hundred thousand in that budget line for years like that, it used to be seventy-fives, then we could do a hundred, the same as we were doing with the fire truck. During the COVID time, we reduced it a little for this, but we got it back up. It's the smartest way for us to keep doing it so that we don't have to go and ask the voters for a five hundred thousand dollar. You know, cause we're.
Same with the ambulance, same with the fire trucks.
The ambulance, nice thing with the ambulance is we don't pay for it, the services of which the ambulance gets called for. Covers for the cost of a lot of the ambulance, that's how it's been sold for years.
Nope, we are the lowest, that is, that is an item we need to take care of, it is, we are so far off. We're about a thousand dollars off per trip.
That's a separate discussion.
We are very far off. I was under your mindset.
Speaking of the fire department, I skipped over that capital reserve fund, which is for their.
Where are the, uh, theirs, twenty-six, twenty-seven, was it?
The next one's a tanker. I don't know how long it is, but the next one's a tanker.
I think the average lifespan is twenty years.
I have to update the equipment list, I'll get that to you.
But, there are, yes, but there's some, we, there's some we don't, we could probably expand some of that out if you even went to twenty-five years. Cause our trucks don't get near as much use as like a Portsmouth truck or something like that, like, so. You may have to do a little bit of maintenance here and there, but maintenance is cheaper than, the fire trucks are ridiculous.
Don't cut our maintenance, John.
They're like one point three million now, they're. I'd rather spend fifty thousand dollars for a new valve or something like that than one point five million for a new tanker. Anyway.
Phase two of the library.
So, just because we're on this subject, I wanna readd it to, is the fact that. Due to the limited amount of equipment that we have, I mean, there's only three trucks over there, right? Is that when one truck goes and it goes out for service. You know, and that truck has it older, and we keep just trying to keep fixing it all the time. That's not the goal, even though it might be cheaper, is we want the best equipment available so that we don't have to maintain it as well. So it's always ready for when it's needed.
Correct, but.
You know, we use an old highway truck, like we did that old one. It spent eight months out of the year at the friggin' service area, but hey, we still had an extra.
The tanker gets covered by the engine three, engine three actually carries more water than the tanker, the tanker, the only thing it carries is the um. Portable. The portable pool that they set up to. To set up.
Portable tanks?
No, they, they set up the, the portable tanks, and then that, the next tanker comes and dumps into that, then they, when they create their daisy chains for large fires. That's the only thing that that one does differently than engine three, but engine three actually carries more water than our tanker.
And that was, the tanker was put into service in two thousand three. Twenty years now.
I'm not saying you never replace it, but the normal twenty year service life, may, like, if the tank holds up, if everything runs, if the truck's not having really issues. It maybe just needs valve work. Instead of spending one.
Well, I think a tanker you probably could, cause it doesn't get used as much. But I would refer to Chief Curry on that one, just to be sure that, you know.
They were having training the other day, and I was, I did stop in, and we were just, I was going through the equipment with them, and that's. The only thing, the other issue is the, the next one probably really overdue is possibly the forestry, but that's getting enough work done right now.
That's in oh six, right?
Oh five.
Oh five?
But, it's getting new leaf springs, so now it's fine, so whatever.
What else?
Okay, um, phase two of the parking lot upgrades at the library, uh, twenty thousand, I think that, so we're in the design engineering phase. They're actually meeting onsite tomorrow, so I'll get more updates because I've been hands off in the project. Jen Phillips, the library trustee, has pretty much taken the reins in the absence of having a public works director, so. Um, I'll get some updates on that, but I believe the twenty thousand that was earmarked for twenty twenty-four is for the actual paving, once the parking lot's been reconfigured, so. That is a plan, um, twenty-five thousand for the gym floor and wall safety upgrades, uh, that was not. Raised in twenty twenty-three as it was originally planned, do you wanna move forward with?
Any of that can come out of their fund, the Reck Revolving Fund, or no?
I can find out, but potentially.
And we're putting the renovation of their new, their offices on them too.
Potentially, we, we still have to get to that discussion.
I think that should be done, I mean, it. It looks.
It needs to be done, but then again, it's like, yes.
Is that potentially an ARPA project?
Right, so we'll put it as a yes, and then we'll determine where we. It, it needs to be fixed, cause it, it's uneven, stuff like that.
Just worry about asbestos in there, now that's a whole different.
But they just, they just dug into that.
Did he say there was any asbestos in there? Okay, wow, that's one worry out of the way.
But I don't know. I don't know that an af, an official determination was made, I mean, like, I wouldn't wanna put that on our plumbing and HVAC. Person to determine, however, they, they probably could.
Four, five hundred dollars to have it tested. I would, it'd be a peace of mind, I would be in favor of having it tested. The only potential. Start ripping anything up.
Can't imagine the asbestos.
None of that, well, that's newer, right, as opposed to in here?
That is the same design.
The same exact flooring. That's throughout this building. Tan and black tile.
When was it put in?
What, one thing that may come up, we'll have to look at, is if you go into the gym and you go kinda to that back left corner. You'll see that around the columns is sinking, so like when I go do, to do the floor. Or we might have to just look at the exterior wall and make sure that the, the wall or the column or whatever. That something's not shifting out of place, cause something's settling for that.
From all the rats tunneling underneath, probably.
Great.
This little court out here, this old basketball court, um, there was a plan to repave that and have. The basketball court remain as well as pickleboard, pickleball court. An exterior pickleball court, so that's ten thousand dollars.
I would leave it on there and put it to the voters, cause people have been talking about it.
Were they, was she gonna put new hoops on to make it actual basketball too, or is it gonna just become pickleball?
I think this is just to repave that surface, so. I, I don't know if that would come out of Reck Revolving or where the cost of the hoops would be, but that's gonna be substantial.
In the nets.
In the nets.
For now, they can probably use whatever they use inside, but.
To have like an exterior ba, like, if it's summertime's nice, if you had lights, like, people could just come in.
You couldn't put in permanent nets and have that used as back basketball hoop too, cause you get poles that come up in the middle of it.
And I mean, that's such a small section, you could probably envelope that into the regular paving project and save quite a bit of money rather than it being specialized.
Right, they wanna play basketball down the elementary school. There's an outside court over there, isn't there?
It's not a full court, but it's a court.
Can we, uh.
This is full court either, this would just be a half court.
Can we look at, uh, possibly paving that back portion of the police's, police sir?
Is that something that you would like to bring forward to the CIP committee, or is that something?
I'd like to see that under the ARPA.
It's a bigger job, that would be most of it.
Not that much back there to, to pave as opposed to doing the whole lot, I'm just saying that dirt section that they have.
I think that's something that you need to consider, um, as you're talking about where you're going with the building priorities. Because if it's.
Yeah, but how, I mean, how far are we out from putting the, putting the new station up, we're still. Few years away.
Twenty twenty-five is when there's potentially forty thousand dollars to be raised for investigating that.
Uh, which begs the question, should we move that up, knowing all the issues that we have on that side of the building? And continue to have. Just throwing that out there for some ideas, cause we all know, and to include the facility committees, have recommended that they have to move. You know, why are we gonna continue kicking the can down the road? The voters may vote it down, um, you know, I'm just, I'm.
You gotta get the numbers at some point. That's all it is, you're spending forty grand to get a number.
Well, it's not even a number, you gotta hire, so think about it this way. This is just for people at home listening. Police station is gonna be just like an addition on the school, so you gotta allocate forty thousand dollars, but that's to hire the architect to build the building. Then you gotta find the piece of land where it's gonna go, and then you gotta figure, I mean, to get a number. You gotta put a lot of pieces together in order to say, Nottingham, this is what it's gonna cost, but to find that number, we're gonna have to spend fifty thousand dollars.
That's what I just said.
Right, okay.
To get a number, you gotta spend the money to get a number.
And the, the new, well, I shouldn't say new, but it's the newest building that.
Before we go there, we should actually probably even talk about where the building's gonna go.
The fire department was designed to have the police department attached to it.
I don't, you would have to show me that, cause I don't think that would fit our current police department. You'd have to show me the original.
We got the little blueprint somewhere.
I, I think they are over at the fire station.
Are they, okay.
I haven't laid eyes on them here, but they could be.
But, okay, but getting back to that original question, should we move that up? We have a yes, I say yes, who else?
Absolutely.
Alright, so we'll move that up.
Uh, ten thousand dollars to the invasive species capital reserve fund and expendable trust fund. Invasive species is for the melfoil. Herdication and.
Given that they spent over fifty thousand dollars this year, and that was through grant funding. And they've already got new blooms. Based upon what the canyon gave us.
I have had the privilege and honor to, to, to take a tour of that lake over there by a, a lake resident, forgive me for not remembering your name, sir. Um, but, um, it's, uh.
Neil Santos. Was it the gentleman that presented? Neil Santos.
Gentle, thank you.
I don't think he cannot spend the money on it.
That's where I was getting at, thank you, Steve. However, I do believe the state should be more involved in how they, the, than how.
Can't argue with that.
We, you can, you can say that to your blow in the face, the state's.
Well, they are, I mean, the, so the state, there is grant funding as long as they apply for it, and we got that out of the presentation, we reaped a hundred percent. Benefit this year, next year is gonna be dependent on how many towns request need, so anywhere from twenty to fifty percent grant match.
Cause it's just a matter of time before it ends up in our other water sheds here.
I'd already be there.
If it's not already there, right?
And again, this is invasive species, not for there, it's for anywhere.
It's for any water body.
No, you're right, you're absolutely right.
So it could be right this fishing hole, we like to have fishing derbies. That might not be a fishing hole if, if it gets full, so.
So we're in favor of Warren article?
Hundred thousand dollars for the community center back of building, that was a plug figure that was put in place.
Gutting it, that's it. That's what, my interpretation.
I believe that's the way the CIP understood it as well.
I, I don't know, I wasn't part of the committee.
Yeah, I, it's for gutting purposes and sealing it up.
A hundred thousand dollars is excessive.
Well, you've got a lot of animal feces over there, you've got, it, it's a biohazard nightmare, so. Have someone like, uh, Surfboat come in.
It's a mute point for the fact that if we haven't sent out bids to find it, so it's a mute point to even put the hundred on there. Until we have three companies that say, hey, we do it for this, we do it for this, for this, so that we can actually go to the town and say. This is what it's gonna cost.
And this is, and this is what we're gonna do.
And this is what we're gonna do.
I've had a company approach me saying they can do it less than a hundred thousand.
Bring that in front of us.
Well, this is just recent, so, he'll have his opportunity to bring it forward.
Hope sooner than later.
I think the CIP, we, we spoke and based upon when we were thinking about with that facilities report. And the board of selectmen had talked about it when they first presented it to us. We have somebody on board, once we get somebody on board to help us prioritize, look at costs and stuff like that, then we can present to the voters what our priorities are. So we said, push that, whatever that dollar amount's gonna be, is push it up to two thousand twenty-five.
With all the issues that we have out back there.
Yeah, I mean, it could be five hundred thousand.
Are we gonna at least seal it off?
Well, that's a question for whether or not you, how much you want to potentially raise in that building maintenance capital reserve fund, we raised ninety thousand dollars this year. We used it to fix all the items that failed, so. The question is, is what dollar figure do you wanna throw in there, and then can we potentially use those funds to seal off and encapsulate this portion of the building?
Cause it does need.
Cause it gives it more flexibility.
Do you wanna increase that ninety thousand too?
Well, where is ninety thousand?
We don't have it on this. It was the capital reserve fund that John Scruton happened to come across, and then you, you added funds, there was forty thousand, I think, when he found it. And then you added ninety thousand, we've expended all but fifteen.
One five?
One five.
That's the building?
Yes, it's a building maintenance capital reserve fund.
And when does that need to be spent by?
It does not. Capital reserve, so as the need presents itself.
So we're putting another ninety thousand in, is what we're.
Is that your pleasure? What is that figure?
How far did ninety thousand go last year?
Um, it did the underdrain repair, it replaced the furnace. Furnaces, um, actually, I can tell you.
I mean, I, well, we saw the.
So we had forty in there already, and we added ninety, so that's what, a hundred and thirty?
And we have fifteen thousand dollars left in it.
So we spent a hundred fifteen thousand dollars without even.
Without a bat in that, without even really making a dent.
So we did, so we did do the fire station overhead doors. Library furnace, um, the community center water tanks, the fire station water softener, sediment traps. Um, we did the underdrain repair, we did the furnace and the water heater here.
Well, we gotta start somewhere.
AC unit, the library.
We did the cameras at the fire station, the lock change from the fire station.
So if you do it as non-lapsing and do it like a hundred twenty thousand, cause we spent a hundred thirteen thousand this year, we know we're gonna need to spend.
Well, it doesn't need to be non-lapsing, cause what you're doing is you're putting in that separate.
Into, oh yeah, into the capital reserve, yep.
It's usually a hundred twenty.
Everybody give it back?
It's not a Warren article.
It's up to the voters, so put it in.
You're right, but.
But they've talked about it, and if we say it's, this is what it's for, you saw that facilities report, we need to start.
And they can cut it to wherever they want.
And that will give your facilities, your working facilities manager. A budget to potentially work off of for some of the, whatever projects you prioritize. The next item is forty thousand dollars for an accounting system replacement, we had this discussion at CIP. So BMSI, which is our current accounting software, and then we use ADP for the payroll software. BMSI was purchased last year, I believe, uh, they've, they're pretty much moving toward a cloud-based software. I have to check with Betsy and see if she knows if they are gonna continue supporting the original desktop software that we're using. If that's the case, we can push that forward to a future year. It, it is a large project to roll out a new accounting software, so.
If we're moving forward in the police station, it would be nice if we can move this back one year and swap the two forties.
There you go. So as long as they'll continue to support our existing software, and we don't have to migrate to a cloud-based or find a potential new software in twenty twenty-four. Then I'd like to move it forward for two thousand twenty-five. So other items that we had loosely discussed?
So I, I just gotta, we're talking. If we put eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of Warren articles in front of the, the general public, you know, for votes. That's the potential of raising this one dollar, sort of one, roughly one dollar, if it's eighty-five. If, her calculation is correct, and this is math, I could be wrong.
if, or calculation correct, and this is math, I could be wrong, so I hold it. Eighty-five thousand dollars is a ten cents difference in our.
Tax rate.
Tax rate. So eight hundred fifty thousand is a dollar. So we're twenty-one forty-four, that's twenty-two forty-four. Right? So what is our number that we're, how much money are we actually putting into our warrant articles right now?
Well, some of those we can pull back and put in ARP or the smaller ones, we're just talking about what we, what.
We're compiling a list of consideration.
I, I agree with what you're saying.
So what I'm just trying, again, I'm just, again, I'm just throwing out information as we sit here and we think of all this stuff, and we start putting your numbers, and we start saying one twenty-five for this bill here, we got a hundred for capital reserve here, another hundred for capital reserve here, there's your three hundred and twenty-five thousand, then we got another fifty here, I mean, before you know it, we're at a half, I mean, it's just to be aware that, you know, that's when people see a budget and they see the warrant articles, it's just to for their future reference that.
But this is the future going forward, you're gonna see a number of warrants.
Oh, I, again, I'm just speaking for whoever's listening at home. They can have an idea of, well, when we talk about money, what it actually means. To keep them informed on what.
It's tough, because when you see and you hear the people, they want things fixed, they wanna brought it up to date, but then they want the taxes to be manageable, the.
It's, and it's.
So last year was nine hundred ten thousand in warrant articles.
What's that?
Last year was nine hundred ten thousand.
And they all passed, right?
Because you have a lot of new developments in the Britain.
I'm not, again, I'm not against any of it, I'm just.
Just tough.
I'm just throwing that information out there, so, because I don't want people to think that we're not aware of when we start talking about dollars and money, we're not aware of what the effects is gonna be for the money that we're talking and what we're asking for. Or asking.
We can't put twenty thousand dollars more in building maintenance in the operating budget.
No.
And we don't have any commercial real estate to, um, offset a tax rate.
Absolutely.
Not yet. That Route Four thing, I don't know what that's gonna actually do, but.
Turns into epic.
Yeah, I doubt it. Uh, so just kidding, uh, all right, so no, I'm just, that, that's my little, just, I was thinking out loud, just so people can hear.
So that was just based off the CIP? And then we had discussed some other options that would be potentially warrant articles for twenty twenty-four, um, that are monetary, uh, one of them was converting this to the rec and the community room to meeting space.
Do we have a strong dollar number for that, or are we still wishy-washy?
I don't think we can do that until we know what we're doing with everything else, in my mind. Because to start ripping apart inside this building, and then if we know the police department, if that gets approved, and we know we wanna move forward with that after they do a study next year, and the police department moves out, well, does that mean we should actually do something different with, what's going on in front of here? And then if you find out what it's gonna cost with the, I mean, you've got a lot of space here. I just wanna make sure, if you're gonna start digging in, spend fifty to a hundred thousand dollars on renovating this whole space and adding, and then moving us to the back, or, I don't know. It just feels like we're doing things piecemeal without knowing what the full plan for the building would be.
I think it was quoted, like, just under nineteen thousand for the renovation down below, and rec was gonna pay for this with their rec revolving fund.
And I think that was a.
The last board, that's what was discussed with the last board, now it may change because we have a new board.
I do think the earlier that we could at least get rec into this portion to give them this area would be good if we can get that managed, fixed for a manageable cost, like, you know, if it's, if it's nineteen, that, that could be an ARPA type of thing, like, to get us in over there and get them into here. And then, and then the doors, and then that allows like the kid. Again, rec is, brings in a ton of money, so the best we can do to make them function correctly, because there's four people sitting in a closet, basically.
And this is could be something.
But I agree with you, if we go, if we're going to like, so it's like, how much little bit of money can we spend to make us more efficient for the next year too, because the police station is gonna take them a year if it's approved.
No, I know, I just don't want, if you start tearing down walls and rebuilding here, and then once you come up with the final plan for the building, and you start ripping down the same walls you just built two years ago, it's a waste of money.
Well, I think this building, we're several years out before that happens. You know, the main focus is the police department, and if it gets approved, we're still looking at up to three years before.
Right, oh easily.
So, and then what the next, then we'll, are we gonna look at this building, which I think we should, or are we gonna look at the, uh, the highway department, you know? Six one dozen to the other, um, and even so, it's still gonna take at least three or four years after that before we break ground on a new facility, so we still have time.
And we might not be here.
And we might not be here, exactly.
Time to fill it out.
Thank you, John.
So do we, so, for discussion purposes, add something in for this, and then we can decide whether or not you wanna move forward with our.
This is also, whoever that maintenance guy that we put in, we can get his feedback on, you know, on the actual cost for that back, or even this.
It could be super pretty, it just needs to be a nice color paint.
This should get done next year, no matter what. The rec deserves it, they need it, they've overgrown.
Yep.
They've showed their popularity in town, they, I mean, it's just.
Programs almost doubled, yeah.
I mean, they, they, and again, it's not for any other reason, but, you know, I have no skin in the game over there whatsoever, I don't have kids or anything, but it's.
Right, so, keep it on the list? What was next, Ellen?
We did the gym floor, we did, we talked about it back, um, with potential restructuring of the fire department, if we want to do a warrant article to increase for a chief. Over and above, over and above the, right, so we had originally it was proposed for seventy thousand dollars for part-time, full-time, however it made out to cover the chief's position, we moved it back to the eleven thousand dollar stipend.
But we don't know where that's gonna go, and we could still get away with a, a part-time chief.
As of right now, it's a stipend position, so.
We, we need somebody up there on a regular basis, but.
Not a full-time.
I, I don't think, I think the seventy thousand dollar plug figure in there, I, I don't necessarily know that it was ever determined whether it was gonna be part-time or full-time, it was just something to start the discussion, so. It got moved out of the operating budget. Do you want to factor in a salary for whatever the position would be?
I guess the current chief, we need, you know, have his input, whether we need someone over there on a more permanent basis. Uh, and you probably know more than the rest of us. And go from that, I think they need someone there on a more regular basis, now whether that's part-time, full-time, that's up to.
I mean, it's partially there at the department, but other functions out into the town without impacting the, the current chief, like operating, uh, a business, or, you know, having a job outside of that. And being like, oh, we need a fire inspect, inspection at the school, or.
Yeah.
Whatever, so. It's definitely, uh, yes, put it on the list for discussion.
Okay.
We can't have six full-time employees without any supervision.
That's what I was trying to get at, thank you, Steve. Yes.
Okay. Uh, another area that was discussed when we were going through trying to fill positions, obviously talking about the retention, but more importantly, the recruitment when we have open positions, the fact that we are one of the only towns in the area that does not participate for our group one employees in the New Hampshire retirement system. So obviously, right now, in our budget, we have it factored in up to a six percent matching contribution into a four fifty-seven B, which is the government side of, of simple 401K. To opt into group one with New Hampshire Retirement, it would require a warrant article adoption to be approved by the, the voters. And the employer percentage, matching percentage would be eleven percent, so you're talking about five percent for the full-time eligible employees that are not already enrolled in, so your police department and your fire department are already enrolled as group two, so it would be the, the remaining full-time employees in the office and the highway department.
Well, the benefits of, of, of them being in the New Hampshire retirement system is retention.
Or in recruit, in recruitment.
Recruitment and retention.
What's, what's that number looking like now?
I don't know, because my computer died. I'm sorry.
All right.
I do, but.
Is it micro yes, yeah, I think it's.
No, it's not, it's a traditional plug. But I can plug a figure in there if you want to potentially move forward with a warrant article for that.
Yes, I.
Yeah, I agree, it's definitely up for discussion, and it should be nice to know what that number, so just talking for, let's, I wanna do the hypotheticals, because I wanna just figure out how this plays in. We, we go through, we have our four percent operating budget this year, but then we make a warrant article and they approve this additional funding for retirement, which isn't in our operating budget, but then.
It gets added into the default budget, just like, so in two thousand twenty-one, you added in the six full-time firefighters at two hundred and twenty-five thousand, so the default budget was the bottom line, operating budget as approved, plus that warrant article. Because you can't move forward, you would potentially, if you.
But for the four percent, it's a four percent increase over the year before, so then, does that just kinda get like massaged in there, or is it like gonna chew up a bunch of our four percent?
It got added in there when we calculated the four percent tax cap for two thousand twenty-three.
Okay. I just curious how that works, if you add something in that kinda becomes part of your operating budget, but you didn't approve it beforehand, how that.
So the board's in agreement moving forward with that?
Correct, to upward discussion.
All right.
Until we get it.
And the rest of the stuff was not monetary, so. Unless you have any other thoughts.
So it would be roughly like twenty-five thousand dollars. Very roughly, on the full-time salary. Elections, wasn't there something that Dawn had requested?
Twenty-five thousand dollars is what it's gonna cost?
In addition, because we're already doing six percent into the four fifty-seven plan. So that.
For the people that are contributing.
Yes.
Remember, if you're not contributing.
Right.
We're not paying.
Right.
Now, everybody, this automatically enlists everybody in.
No, it does not, it's your full-timers.
It's just your full-timers.
Okay, as all our full-timers contribute.
Well, according to, when we had the policy planning session, all the full-timers were taking advantage of the four fifty-seven match. We had reviewed that, when we're talking about benefits and everything.
I think.
I don't think so.
No, I, I don't think, so we only match up to what the employees contribute.
Correct, but I thought that at that meeting you had said that all the fullti, all the full-time eligible.
I don't know that I actually.
Maximizing the match.
I don't know that I actually said that.
No?
I don't think, I don't think that was the case.
I don't remember that discussion either, I'm sorry.
It's when we were talking about benefits.
Yeah, I can, I can see if there are people that are.
This conversation also came up under Scrute when he was here. And that number was a lot bigger.
Than the twenty-five thousand?
I think so, for, the, in, in this discussion of this, if it was only twenty-five grand, we would've done it years ago. Absolutely. This, there's something more.
I'm sorry, the eleven percent, the eleven percent is the employee contribution, is the employer contribution, so I have to get that rate, and we'll, we'll do the calculation.
And the rates have changed, and our other one has grown pretty fast too, because she was looking through, and she was like, wait a second, these numbers are. I think that, when you've looked at them before, they're they've come back a little bit.
So, is this group one or two?
Group one, we're already enrolled in group two. So group two is specifically your fire and your police, and they're at different percentage rates. All right, so I'll at least get that open for discussion, and I can have that for Monday. Um, so Tim, you are correct, um, Dawn, the moderator, had also brought up the question as to whether or not we are going to purchase a voting machine, I think that was, that was one of the discussions, the information was in your selectmen's meeting packet from the last meeting, is to what the state recommended between the two different um, manufacturers. But I think what we have to do is you, in a publicly notice meeting, I think you have to determine whether you're going to be an electronic or a hand count officially. I think that was a stipulation. If I remember that, well, I mean, I'm going off memory.
Hand counts.
I don't remember.
Well, I, I read through the document.
I, I think it was, it was part of one of those guidances.
Okay.
But, but that was one of the, the items that she brought up, is whether or not we're purchasing the voting booth. Not the voting booth, but the ballot machine.
Which there are funds available to help with that potentially too.
So no on the warrant article for that?
Well, no, we, we, we would, it wouldn't cover the whole thing, but we also need other materials, we need the handicap uh, booth, we need to replace a bunch of the, although the handicap booth seemed like it.
Yeah, I think the handicap booth is fine now, you did a great job cleaning it.
The partitions.
Well, till we pull it out again.
Oh no, it's fine, it's in a metal case.
All right, what else?
So I think that was it for warrant articles, I can get these all drafted up for consideration, you can determine what you wanna.
All right, so. Have we all had an opportunity to review the packets that were brought in, the resumes and all that for maintenance, maintenance position? Ellen, did you have an opportunity to meet with all of them?
Um, I have met with one of them, the other one, I have not.
Just never called you back, or? Okay. So, is the board ready to move forward with with this position?
Can this be done in an open forum, or do we have to go to non-public?
Non-public, just usually with hiring.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, because, you know, I wanna know if the board is, they wanna talk about this, so that we can go into it, or leave it for the next meeting, I'd rather not leave things on the table and just get things done.
An extra.
So let's just say this, we had enough discussion tonight about things where if we don't put somebody on, half the stuff we talked about tonight, it doesn't throw out the window of getting done, all right?
And we already talked about having the interview process and stuff like that, so I think we're on board with moving forward.
Okay, let's go to non-public, let's do it.
I motion that we close the planning session here and move to non-public.
Per.
Ninety-one A, three, or two, three, no, wait, no, three, two, B for hiring.
All right, are you gonna make it?
I did, I missed.
So I will, if you wanna say it correctly.
I make the motion to move to non-public for RSC ninety-one A, colon, three, two, B.
I'll second.
Motion made by Tim DaBrio, seconded by Matt Sherlin. Oh, roll call.
Hi, John Warren.
Hi, Ben Barley. Hi, Tim DaBrio.
Hi, Matt Sherlin.
Thank you Nottingham, good night.